Next item is minutes.
Move on to the minutes, section.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, I need a motion on the memorandum of motion of transactions.
Move it. Receive it. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Pass it around for signature. J D, is that all you have?
Yes, sir.
I discern. I use resolution for approving petition for suspension of taxes through redemption process for A K. Move it.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next resolution approving petition for suspension of taxes through the redemption process for J G.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is a discussion action to provide professional consultant services to Woodbury County. Any jeopardy in view in this?
Okay, what this is to get on the same basis as rest of counties is cost advisory. Services doing, we have employed David Arandale- Randall Handley for the last several years to our federal indirect reimbursement costs. But this is extending it for one more year so we get online with all the other counties. The rate will be the same as you see on page two, it's $6,475 for each year of the last three years, that's what the cost will be for amended year.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item is from the auditor, two points, it's the Woodbury County, Woodbury Township trustees.
Move it. Second.
The project taken in the venture.
I'm gonna move on half, booster, all, all I need.
Clear. Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Move on to Smithland.
Second. Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Just to clarify on that, I think that most of the time when you receive those, the other board members appoint those board members, so you just receive those appointments. This time, I think it's two out of the three, uh, that should actually have been out of power members, so this time we were not seeing them. Just to clarify.
Well, that, I was gonna ask you, I forgot that, how long is this moving for?
Until the next election, they're just too filled with vacancies.
And that would be?
Well, the next general election, or the next, if there's a special election held between them, then they would probably sit for election.
Add it. Uh, let's move to secondary rules.
Morning.
Good morning.
Um, first item I had on the agenda was regards to Michigan Avenue Bridge, and that was to accept, consider acceptance of a quotation for precast sections. Oden Enterprises is one of two companies that makes precast concrete bridge sections, um, in, in the length and size that we need. Uh, we utilize these sections on a, uh, bridge deck on Michigan Avenue just south of old Highway 20, closer to Correctionville. We're looking at this, uh, similar bridge, uh, this would be just south of D 38 and about a mile and a half to the east of, uh, Anthem. One of the reasons I'm coming to you on this one is because it, uh, it is a significant amount of money we're looking at, um, to get this bridge constructed this summer. As we intend, we want to try and get these into the queue for forming and building so that they're ready when we get the contractor here. We're looking at about an August letting with this, assuming our Corps of Engineers permits and everything coming on time, late August, early September. This would allow, uh, construction of the bridge prior to, um, winter and getting it back open. Uh, I think he's called, the individual who farms and, and lives on the wrong side of this bridge has called, uh, I know he's called Lee's Mark and maybe a couple of the other board members. Um, this is one of the reasons we're looking at precast option on this bridge. We built a continuous concrete slab immediately upstream, uh, gave you a cost comparison. We're looking at, you know, based on average contract prices, about a $10,000 increase on a $400,000 bridge. I know 10,000 is not an insignificant amount of money, but it is just about a wash. We don't know how the bids are going to go, how hungry contractors are going to be. We could get a really good price on that substructure, just like we did on Michigan Avenue. We got that bridge in for a little under $120,000 there, but that was only a single spam, this is a triple spam bridge. But, uh, I, I'm recommending that, uh, we go with a precast section and that the county buy them and we let the contract to construct substructure and install the precast sections we own. We also avoid some charges that contractors typically pass along with overhead. This includes them being shipped to the site, they'll store them until the contractor's ready for them. Um, all in all, I think it's a, it's a good bid and gets a, uh, appropriate, uh, structure in place out there.
And move it, except the, uh, continues, uh, representation? We don't have to bid those out?
There's only two precast operations in the state, and, uh, there is no requirement that we bid when they're, we're buying them for ourselves. You know, we had, uh, Cree Tex, their sections are a good deal deeper in this range. I'm trying to get something that's very close to the, uh, contract, or to what we have in the slab bridge with quad Ts. If, if we had more contract or more precasters to bid from, I would say, let's go for bids, but, um, it's a very, and time is of the essence here as well.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Um, Patty is here, if you want to take her, or we could do the, uh, approval of chair to sign, uh, final foreign market payment voucher for, uh, materials testing.
Move it.
Second. Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Did you want me to continue, or do you want to go on to?
No, we can wait until you can.
Okay.
Does chairman excuse himself, I'm just a bit agitated, I'm just aware of this about this decision.
Okay.
Good morning, uh, what you have before you this morning is continuation of the Safe Schools Health and Students Initiative that was started, uh, with federal money. Uh, the county has continued it since the elimination of the federal money, and what, what we have, uh, before you is continuation of that program. The feds are now, um, Senator Harkin has introduced legislation again through the help, uh, committee out there, and some of it, um, is directly in relation to some of the violence and everything going on in the school systems. Um, but the federal, um, legislation being considered encourages the development of school-wide prevention programs such as positive behavioral interventions and supports to promote positive behaviors in students, create positive conditions for learning, um, and identify students in need of supports and link them with appropriate services. Encourages states to provide technical assistance, modifies the use of funds for grants under section 4121 to include the promotion of school-based mental health partnerships designed to help schools link students with the clinical mental health services they need. And certifies that Title I funds can be used for school-wide intervention services and can also be used to create or update school emergency management plans. So exactly what they're, um, presenting in DC is what we've been doing in Woodbury County for a number of years now. They know that statistics are showing that use of the dollars in this way for mental health services in the schools and with the youth, um, has a positive effect and impact on early intervention diagnosis and treatment. So, it's one of the programs that, that, and I will continue to be in touch with Senator Harkin's office, and the young man's name out there is Brian Massey that's in charge of this, um, movement there, and will continue to be in touch with him, uh, for any possible future funding or use of the, of our program as an outreach pilot project.
How many years have, um, you done this program here locally?
I believe the county has been funding since like 2005?
Did they, but how many years you run it up?
Four. The Sioux City School District had received, and a group had received funding for three years, uh, to do it on the Safe Schools grant, and they were able to stretch that to four. And then the county picked it up through their public hearing process and identified it as a, a priority for Woodbury County and the school districts.
Well, there really isn't anyone out there in the schools doing much mental health counseling, the teachers are strapped and all those outreach workers out of, you know, like 34 years of, um, education. It's probably not enough, but I realize we're not here to, um, expand the program, but it is very worthwhile. The teachers, it's most depend on those outreach workers, the mental health therapist, I know I, I personally recommended students for those services and they were helpful. Um, they are still stretched very thin, um, and I would hope at the federal level there would be legislation that would pass and, and funding that would come through because this all points to, to violence and preventing violence in schools and, and working and giving families skills. You know, those outreach workers sometimes are the only ones who can make a, um, a pathway to the families, they are trusted. You know, they, they go during the day, uh, when teachers can't go, and they have been very effective in helping kids.
I, I think so, I think it's one of the neatest programs that, that we've been able to put in place just for that reason. Because it's early immediate intervention, they help the child, they stop the behavioral problems which can escalate into, um, anxiety, depression, nervousness. Um, so it is quick to respond and then, and then to have the therapists not sit in an office, make an appointment and go, the therapists are there also. The therapist goes to the school. So I think that's, that's just another key component that really makes the program work and responsive to what they need, plus the pathways to the families. So, and the school district does continue to contribute, um, $30,000 a year. Um, I'm hoping that as the federal legislation goes forward, there would be more money available for the tighter budgets to go.
Well, I know their title, uh, sort of, it's a question somewhat, this year, and they did, they lost a lot of their title, teachers, they were rehired into classrooms, so they are struggling with the government, so.
Yep.
Is there a motion?
I have it.
Second.
Quick.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
It sounds a lot better, whatever.
Where we left off was on an item to, uh, approve a permit to work in the right of way. This is down on Lakeport Road, uh, where they're putting in the new Kingston subdivision, uh, they're connecting, uh, Wood Meadows Road to old Lakeport Road, uh, need to place some utilities within the right of way as part of that work. Uh, we have maintenance jurisdiction on Lakeport Road, which is why we're in this, even though the project is within the city limits.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Um, final item I have today is actually a series of items. This is our annual, uh, setting of, uh, special assessments for drainage districts that the Board Supervisors manages. Um, a couple of these are going to be disappearing here shortly. Um, the, uh, Wolf Creek Pump Districts are just about paid off. After two years of them not accumulating debt, they'll be able to dissolve that. We've already had a couple of the, uh, district, uh, representatives talk to us about that. Uh, the other one is Hackley Lateral, they are looking at, uh, getting involved with the, uh, or becoming a part of the Farmer's Drainage District, at which time they'd be managed under somebody other than the Board of Supervisors, they'd be managed by the Farmer's Trustees. Uh, this is a matter of, uh, paying off their debts for this year and paying their drainage district dues until the paperwork catches up with that, so. First one we have, I see these two aren't in the correct order, so let me, let me reorder them. I think Tish must have just thrown them in here as she printed them out.
Do you follow the order of what we've got?
Yeah, they're not.
Okay, it doesn't matter.
I'd move on the Hackley, Hackley Lateral Drainage, second.
That's the Bennett McDonald, that's the problem, the Hallmark has Hackley first, but our agenda has the Bennett.
Well, if you follow what you've got.
Oh, in the Hallmark, yeah.
It doesn't matter, whichever one pleases.
So do Bennett or McDonald?
Do Bennett McDonald for, uh, $1,000.
Is there a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The Hackley Lateral.
Move it, second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Board of Supervisors, you ready to move it?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Move on to Smithland, where are these district?
Can I mention a couple of words about the Smithland, I should, I should let you have a second, but. Um, with Smithland, this is the one where we've had the request for the armoring of the levy. Uh, what I've discussed with, uh, Dennis, and what I'm recommending on this one is that we're only levying the amount for maintenance. This summer we'll have a project that will line that with rib wrap. Uh, Mr., uh, McCall is offering more money upfront now, he's looking at doing 50%. And then we'll levy over two to three years depending on what the actual project cost is against Bennett McDonald. I, I didn't feel it would be in our, in either our or their best interest to go on an estimated price for this. Um, we have to have a public hearing for this, we'll, uh, we'll have that public hearing, we'll have the letting for it, we'll know exactly what our costs are when that comes through. I think it was Riverboat that we were looking at borrowing, uh, suggesting to the board that they borrow the money from, for the project at the time of the letting.
And Smithland is aware of what they're doing here?
Um, we're making the landowners aware of it, and again, there will be a public hearing for it. And we know Mr. McCall is supportive.
We want to hold that here against Smithland?
I think we would want to hold it here, uh, along with the letting. Um, I guess we could do the letting and everything down there at Smithland, that would be the chair's prerogative, I can set it up whichever way you'd like. Um, we could have a project that would be ready to go in late July. We have the, we have all the required permits in place for it. But in, in the case of setting this, uh, this, uh, bid, this basically just continues to take care of the, uh, maintenance of the levy. We also this year have to run cameras on all the conduits that go through the levee, so. We have an eight-inch tile, a 24-inch culvert, we have the four-by-four boxes. Corps of Engineers has this new requirement where they want to have all those shot every five years with fiber optic cameras, so. I have found a contractor in the area and negotiating with him to get that work done.
Is this something they just came up with and pushed the cost down to us, or are they paying for it?
We are paying for it, it's coming out of the levy maintenance, just like mowing, controlling the weeds, controlling the, uh, trees that might grow under the levy. Uh, this is a new requirement by Corps of Engineers, they notified us that it would be coming when they sent out their report in 2012.
You can't fight the law.
No, you can't.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Smokey Island.
Move on, Smokey Island.
Clear.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Move on to Upper Wolf Creek Drainage, Drainage District.
Second.
Is there a lower Wolf Creek?
Um, there, there is a Wolf Creek, yeah, that'll be coming up, and if I could just explain a couple of things about the Upper Wolf Creek is one where we've had almost annual, uh, work needing to be done within that district. Uh, we have a lot of trees that lie in the district, um, we have a lot of folks that are clearing their waterways and fields and field edges and dropping those treetops into the creek. They head downstream, they become lodged, and we have a soil problem. Um, we've been having to spend between $5,000 and $7,000 a year in the Upper Wolf and Wolf Creek to repair these areas. That's why their levy is higher than what most of these are. Very much so.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And move on to Water Creek Drainage.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Move on to Wolf Creek.
Second.
This one I lowered a little bit this year because they do have a balance, um, although we do have one at Savages that needs to be repaired as soon as the banks dry up. We've been trying to, uh, get in and work on that, but we have so much water seeping through the banks that we cannot get it, uh, stabilized. It was a place where we had one of those wood plugs. We also have some cleanouts to do that are around some of the outlets on the crossroad ditches that pull into Wolf Creek. Uh, we're hoping to get that work done this summer during low water.
Is there any pumping going on there?
Okay, that's the Wolf Creek Pumping District, so that's a different area. And there is no longer any pumping going on in those districts, that entire thing has been put to wetlands. But we, we had a huge balance of over $30,000 in pumping fees that we've been whittling down a little bit each year.
Have we owed for pumping?
That, that the district owed for pumping. And, uh, as you can see from, you, you should have had the report for Sub District Two, still had a debt of about $3,696. We levy 4,000, all of them have to pay some drainage district dues. There's been a couple that have been, uh, Pumping District Two owes Pumping District One a little bit of dues money, so, um, we only applied one levy there.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And move on to Wolf Creek Pumping District Two, Three. No, Steve, we just voted on Wolf Creek Drainage, did we?
We did.
Yes, you did Wolf Creek Drainage, now you have Wolf Creek Two and Wolf Creek Three.
Second, number two.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Uh, move on, uh, number three, but there's no amount.
Uh, they have a sufficient balance to pay their drainage district dues for this year, which is about all that's left in there, they don't have any outstanding balances.
Discussions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I hope you all have new pens, everybody needs to sign, including Pat, so.
Thanks, Mark.
That's all I had for today, um, I would like to visit with you a little bit about the mowing permit during your public session, unless you want me to do it now. Uh, we have, well, you have, uh, architects, so, um, during that public session, uh, we're, we're getting a lot of requests to hay and bale in the, uh, right of way. And I'd just like to visit a little bit about that in public session when I have a chance, so.
Regina.
Hello. I'm here today for a request of approval for a change order for the jail, uh, security upgrades and alteration Phase One project. Uh, going into this project, we knew that there were going to be some unforeseen occurrences, and we thought that the best way to handle that would be to include a allowance in the contract for these unforeseen circumstances. Um, the current situation is that the security control system is not acknowledging correctly 14 of the existing doors. And in order to determine, uh, what the exact problem with each of those doors will be, uh, there will need to be an adjustment to each of these doors to evaluate them. That is not an amount that was included in the original contract, construction contract. And so this is an additional amount to, uh, make those adjustments and to evaluate the mechanisms to see what is working and what is not working and what needs to be replaced. So this, um, does not include anything as far as parts for the doors or, um, internal problems, but it does include evaluating whether there are internal problems.
A thousand dollars for this? Is it the electronics or what?
This is a company that is coming from Wisconsin and coming from Alabama, or, I'm sorry, Atlanta. And so we do have, uh, contractor traveling expenses in that cost, as well as my understanding is it'll be a couple of individuals onsite to do the evaluation of the doors and to, um, make the adjustments and to check them with the controls.
They were evaluating the doors.
Yeah, it's extreme to me, but I'm not a door.
All that stuff said closed, right?
With the, the cell doors?
In the door.
Right, they're, they're looking at the, the whole system of the door, how is it closing, is it hitting the strikes correctly? Is the strike functioning, is the, uh, lock mechanism functioning, and are there any broken pieces in, in the door? So we're talking about, um, time and labor to do those things, it's, it's not as simple as, um, close the door, open the door, so there, there will be quite a bit of, of evaluation involved in that time.
They're here, they're here for other things as well as the doors.
I am understanding that they would be here onsite at the same time as other things are going on, but I do not have a clear understanding of that myself, so perhaps that's something you may want me to check into.
I'd move, uh, we accept this, uh, amendment, uh, we gotta, we gotta collapse our board, we gotta get it done.
Second. Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, I will prepare a change order form for your signature, and I will address that to the chair. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Carrie Kellen with the Children's Museum of Sueland, good to see you all again. Um, got some materials for you this morning, uh, for your review. I've, I've been to visit before, we've talked about the Children's Museum project and given you update, thank you. For your support, I know, he was kind of, uh, had a few negative things to say about the project, but, um, things are going very well for us. We're in our capital campaign fundraising stages, uh, to date we have 1.4 million dollars pledged, that's public. Uh, we also have another donor, um, which is the main reason I'm here, that is willing to honor any commitments between now and the end of July, um, that are, uh, pledged up to $1 million, and so we're trying to take advantage of that matching opportunity. Uh, that's the main reason I'm in front of you, the secondary reason is that, uh, our CAT grant, the Vision Iowa Cultural and Tourism Grant is going to be, we're submitting our final submission on July 15th. Um, we already received your letter of support. We already received your letter of support and appreciate that. The timeline with that, Sharice Shiani, of course, being local and a member of the Vision Iowa Board, has suggested that it did not make sense to drop our application in until we had the funds raised, kind of the matching funds, because Vision Iowa would not score the grant until there was 50% shown as being pledged. Well, with our pledges so far and with the million dollar matching, we will be at that 50% in order to apply for July 15th. So we are here looking for a gift from Woodbury County. And I do want to let you know, we have already approached the city. They have pledged $250,000, and so we have a quarter of a million dollar gift from the city of Sioux City. We've also approached a few other county organizations outside of Woodbury County and have received some interest and have also received pledges. Plymouth County Farm Bureau has pledged and some other outlying kind of entities have pledged their support. We also have letters of support from a number of different communities within Woodbury County that have written in to support the cultural and tourism grant efforts. And so we're here to talk to you about how the supervisors would like to support the Children's Museum project.
What's your total project cost?
Six million. That includes half a million dollar endowment, and it includes bridge financing costs, that sort of thing. The exhibit portion of the museum is $2.5 million, and new construction on the building site down at Pearl and Seventh Street is going to be right at $3 million.
And what are you asking from Vision Iowa?
Vision Iowa will support typically around 18 to 20% of your budget, so we're asking for a million dollars from them. Some of the naming levels are in front of you. We went through the whole presentation the last time I was here to kind of show you what the project was about. One of the things that we're looking for a naming sponsor for is the grocery store or market. One of the things that's been really important to me personally is trying to make sure that there's that farm-to-table kind of conversation within the exhibit plan. And I think that's an important thing for a lot of the communities that are involved in Woodbury County as well. So my suggestion to you would be that it would be lovely to have the Woodbury County Farmers Market and have the grocery store or market named after Woodbury County. That's a pledge of $75,000. I would love to see that over three years. That'd be $25,000 a year for three years. And it would be naming, recognition, and visibility for Woodbury County as well. But of course, these are just suggestions and willing to open the discussion to anything that you think would be a better fit.
It's a little higher than the $5,000 that we gave.
It is.
What would you say?
A little higher than the $5,000 that we gave to the last couple of Vision Iowa. I mean, I think that's what we did for Mobile. We just did that for...
You're talking about a significant project and something that affects the entire county. Yeah. It's also an opportunity, really, that everyone from around the county is going to be able to take advantage of. You know, the field trip opportunity, they're all within a very easy driving distance, makes a huge impact on early childhood education. You know, and I think it has a lot of the conversation points that we need to help with that early childhood education. I have also talked with Sharice, and she said that, you know, Vision Iowa, the discussions that have happened within those committee meetings are that they want to see a sizable donation, and $5,000 is not going to cut it. She said, "I should tell you," that she personally says, "anti-up." You know, but Sharice, yeah. Sharice has been very vocal about the fact that Vision Iowa is going to want to see a significant gift from the county level as well as the city level. And the city has already put in a quarter of a million dollars. So, you know, I think that a $75,000 ask, while significant, is not extreme either to gain that support. Also keeping in mind that your $75,000 becomes $150,000 with that million dollar match, and it'll be matched by Vision Iowa with the CAT grant as well. So that commitment of $75,000 today, that pledge, makes a significant impact on the total project budget.
What did we give to the museum? How much did it say? Do you remember?
I think it was $10,000 or something like that. I do not remember. I believe it was. Mary, I want to compliment you on standing up there and asking.
Well, thank you. It was a nice pitch, though, right?
It was.
Yeah. You know, the other thing I want you to keep in mind is that the Children's Museum is not the public-private partnership that either the public museum or the Art Center or some of these other entities are. The Children's Museum is a private 501(c)(3) organization. While we have the support of the city, we are a standalone not-for-profit. We are much different than some of these other organizations, and we are doing all the fundraising privately. So it does take a little different route. We're not going to have sustaining funds from the city on an ongoing basis. We're here for a one-time ask, and then our operating budget, once we're open, is self-sustaining. And so it's not something where it's an ongoing support kind of a basis that we're looking for. We're looking for a one-time gift that gets the doors open, gets the project accomplished.
When you say it's self-sustaining, how?
Admission fees. The Children's Museum will be charging, and that's on your frequently asked question sheet, too, if you need to review that, but the Children's Museum will be charging $7 a person for admission. Family memberships will be $85 a year, and that covers about 70% of our operating expenses. There will be some ongoing fundraising that happens, you know, friends of and business memberships, that sort of a thing. But overall, 70% of our total operating budget is covered by admission fees.
Well, I'd like to recommend I do support it, as you guys know.
And you think $75,000 sounds like a great number, don't you, George?
And I think we could basically support it out of a riverboat funds if necessary and do a three-year thing like this with $75,000, because it is an investment as far as it's concerning our most important thing in this community, and that's our children. And it will draw in not only the youngsters from this urban area, but from the surrounding small towns and other parts of the Soulan area. So it's a good investment, gives our youngsters something to do that's positive, and it's a family thing, and I think a $75,000 contribution is appropriate. I'll say it, I'd move it. So listen, what goes? Well, I think if there's a free museum, doesn't it be appropriate to give that kind of money, but when you're judging, showing $7 each, that's a pretty step on these budgets.
It's really not, though. If you think about the cost of a movie or you think about the cost of a lot of the other entertainment venues, to go to Chuck E. Cheese or some other, you know, non-educational entertainment opportunities, the fees are much higher. And you're talking about $7 for an all-day pass versus an hour and a half movie that they're sitting stagnant in. You're also with an $85 family membership. That's a family of four. They can attend three times and it's paid for itself. So they can attend monthly, and they've more than earned their funds back. It's very affordable entertainment.
Popcorn and pops, ten bucks.
Right.
I've got some programs.
Fifteen if you get gummy worms. I just did it this weekend. It's rough, yeah.
That's a pretty stiff commitment, gentlemen. Well, we've got a pretty, I mean, we need more things for our youngsters to do in this community. It's investment, like I said, in our children, and that's important. We have to hold our youngsters and to have a good quality community, I think this is necessary. It's a really good investment, I think. Okay. Any other comments, Mary?
I guess I'm thinking if we do vote for that today, what are your plans? I know you weren't firm on the last one.
Sure.
On how you are going to serve the children living in poverty, because I just this morning on the news.
Right.
You know, Woodbury County's poverty level has risen while the rest of the state has lowered, and $7 quite honestly is a lot for many of our children.
It is.
So if, I would need to see something in the plan if you're going to then enter...
Absolutely.
You have $75,000.
Sure, sure.
Free...
Well, and that's a good point. In our operating budget, we do have allocations for free and reduced admissions. That's done a couple of different ways. You'll notice on the board list, Dr. Paul Gossman is one of our board members. We're working closely with the Sioux City School District to figure out class tours, field trips, that sort of thing. That'll be at a very discounted rate, somewhere around $2 to $3 per child. There are also opportunities within the school district for funding of those field trips. They're very excited about the opportunity to partner with us. We have donors who've already expressed interest in doing free family days. So one of them, which we haven't applied to, it's a little early for us to get this application in, but Target, with a lot of children's museums across the country, do Third Thursday's free. And so Thursday evenings, Target underwrites the expenses of everyone who comes through the door. That type of thing will be occurring when we get the doors open. Right now, we're fixated on getting the walls up and the roof on, but that planning for free admission is something that we've been very cognizant of and want to make sure it's accessible to the entire community. It'll be done two ways, through those free family days, which we do have underwriters that have expressed interest in that, and then also through the school district, through the field trip opportunities, where they have very reduced admission for large groups.
What's your projected opening date?
We met with the architects this morning, and we plan to begin demolition on the site in October. Construction should be starting spring of 2014, all weather-dependent, climate-dependent, but we have a target open date of May of 2015. Maybe slightly sooner than that, but May 2015 is what we're shooting for.
And one other question.
Yeah.
Is the $250,000 donation from Sioux City, is that money or is that in kind? Is that roadwork?
Right. It's a mix, it is. They have on tap to gift the alleyway to us. That's a gift of $5,000 in kind, but they also have cash that they're putting in, waiving permit fees. It's a gift in a number of different ways. I think we figured out that about 50% of it was in kind and 50% of it was actual cash. That's...
All $25,000 cash.
That's still with the new construction that we're going into. Some of that's changing a little bit in between there, but...
Significant.
Yeah, significant gift. Ms. Debbie Bernstein LaCroy. Deborah's with me today. She is one of the original founding members of the Children's Museum of Souland. This is actually Debbie's passion project. She's been with it for nine years. Her youngest son was not born yet when she started this project, and we're trying to get the museum up before he goes off to college. So Debbie's with, in case you have any interest in the history of the project, we covered a little bit of that last time. Debbie's family have also been significant contributors, State Steel, Uncompressed Steel, and the Bernstein family have all stepped up. They've become naming donors of three of the exhibits so far. So we brought somebody who's already put money in.
I have one more question. So is the $75,000 pledge, is that contingent on just the clarification on Vision Iowa or is that just, I mean, what's the motion?
No, it's not contingent on anything. It's by a limit, sir.
And I would say, of course, we'd love the money, you know, in a one-time gift, but if you'd like to pledge it over multiple years or something to that effect, that would be fine with us as well. There are a number of organizations that are pledging over multiple years.
My motion, it was intended over a three-year period.
Perfect. Perfect.
Unreliable funds. Yeah. Yeah, Sharice doesn't approve it. She's not here for me.
Yeah, I think she's abstaining on that vote, but she has been a great counselor for us, and we meet the criteria. So the goal now is to have the funds in place to move that forward quickly.
And this really is a project that is needed. We did a fundraiser, Pirates and Princesses, which was just going to be this small little fundraiser to help create awareness, and then we were hoping for 300?
We were hoping for 200 to 300 kids on a Sunday afternoon.
During the circus?
Two-hour period, the same day as the circus. Were you there?
I was there. It was a zoo.
We had nearly 900 people at Emma's Event Center, which I think capacity is 500 people or something on that room. We had almost 900 people in two hours on a Sunday afternoon.
They were lined up or all the way out. I believe they need to be more things.
Families in Sioux City need this.
Absolutely.
And beyond Sioux City, I mean, it does, it impacts the entire county.
It does.
It's driving distance for so many of the communities that you serve, and it's an opportunity for them to engage with their children in an educational manner. That just doesn't exist. I mean, the closest children's museums are...
I think people will bring their families there.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah. And I, I mean, I think it's a choice and I've now developed a piece.
It has so many values. I started it as a, there's nothing to do with our children, we need some things, and for my kids, they're non-athletic, this is the type of thing that they like. They like the edutainment, they like hands-on, they like science, and this is all STEM-based, science, technology.
Engineering and math.
Engineering and math, and so it fits what my boys, so I've got my selfish reasons, even though this will be opened in time for Billy's Bar Mitzvah, but that's my goal. And it also has, you know, you've got the tourism, and you've also got bringing families in and keeping them here.
Well, and I think we discussed this last time, too, but I don't have children myself. The reason I'm involved is from a young professional retention standpoint and keeping the best and brightest within our area and within our community. When you look at the frequently asked question sheet that I put in there for you, communities with children's museums show a higher standard of scores on standardized tests. They show a higher rate of secondary education and collegiate education levels. They also keep and retain young professionals with young families, and there's a significant exodus of that from our smaller communities and even from the Sioux City metro area. And if we can provide something that makes the quality of living better for these young families, they're more apt to stay in the community, they're more apt to develop their careers here rather than moving to communities like Kansas City or Omaha or Minneapolis where they have these amenities. And if we don't provide the amenities, they're not going to stay. I'm passionate about having great people working next to me, and I'm tired of the great and the best and the brightest staying for two years and leaving for another community. Great places to go visit, but I'd like them to be here shoulder to shoulder so that we can make a huge impact. And so that's the reason I'm involved in the Children's Museum.
You got this down pretty good.
$75,000 seems like a small amount to keep the best and brightest of our community in Sioux City.
And it's going to be named a George Ford New York.
When would we like that to start? Want to start this fiscal year or start July first, run next year? We can, we got time to write one more plan next week if you want to get the thing jump-started.
We do have a balance.
We do have money available. So you start it now that way?
I would like to start.
Get it right away, and next year they can promote it a little bit quicker, maybe three, long years.
Well, it doesn't matter because next year you have to wait until after July.
True, but you went at the way, instead of 14, 15, 16, you push it up a year. Get it in this year now, then just do one more year to get the money early year quicker.
That's a brilliant suggestion.
So we need a plan submitted as soon as possible for the first one to be adopted. We want to do it this year. So we get it next week. If we voted out.
If you vote for it, yes.
Are there any other questions? I'm not going to vote for it. I think it's a wonderful project, but I just think it's a good way to contribute that kind of money. Anybody else?
You got somebody back for you?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Pass three to two.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Don't come back again.
I promise not to.
Come back each time you walk here. I'd like to hear your report on the results after you get it.
Absolutely. And we will want you to come back. Absolutely. Well, and if I could suggest that maybe it's best to even have some type of a tour where you can go through and be able to see what your investment went towards.
Absolutely.
Great.
Next item is a discussion on the Service Center for Industrial Research and Service. This department with...
Extension.
The Extension Service, their economic development director. And I think I'd like to be able to, um, Jeri, to meet with Sherri McGill and whoever else and hammer this out and bring it back to the board to see if this is the direction we'd like to go. Well, I visited, you know, I found her Friday, as you know, when she made the presentation. She was in Plymouth area here before the meeting started. Really, there's nothing to discuss unless the committee has a meeting with them around the details. I want to be on the committee. We've basically set up a Plymouth area meeting July 9th, and I think Jackie volunteered to participate on committee also, so after that, then there can be a report. If that, yes, you volunteered.
Yes, that's... Yeah.
And then you can make them hammer out what you can and bring it back and the board's considered. Next item is hearing any individual or group wishing to make a presentation to the board.
Good morning.
Yes, sir.
My name is Jim Marshall and I'm here to discuss some issues that took place last Friday at your retreat that we didn't have an opportunity to comment on at that time. First of all, I'd like to say that there was a lot of good information that was presented. But there were also, I feel, olive branches that were offered to the board to resolve some of the issues that are before you today. One of those was off-duty work. I believe that the sheriff said that the union is willing to defray the cost of the use of the vehicle. The uniforms, I, I personally don't see how that is an issue. Number one, it deters the crime at any event or wherever they are at on their off-duty work. But number two, the PR you get out of it, you, you can't buy that kind of PR. And I would hope that we want that kind of PR in our county. And it's just cheap. It's, doesn't cost a dime. There were also, also some other issues that were brought up that I thought were, were very interesting. Some of it, I don't know that much about. The volunteer deputies, I don't know how that works. I think that is something that you should explore. I just, I just wanted to make those comments. I wanted to make sure that the board understood, and I'm sure you did, that there were olive branches extended to you to try to resolve this issue. As a taxpayer of Woodbury County, I don't wish to have my taxes go to pay attorney's fees to represent an issue that could have been resolved right here. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Well, Jim, for your information, it has been trying to resolve here. And the sheriff has definitely opinion and so has the board. Can't reach, you know, an agreement that there's, and it's got to work.
Well, as I, as I told you, I saw an olive branch put forth last Friday by the sheriff. I don't know why it wouldn't be yours too. It was very simple, very straightforward.
Jim, but you know, I think we offered also olive branch that you might not be aware of some time back. And I believe that the supervisor Boykin did that initially was to, because I agree, I think the uniform does mean something. I think it means a lot. And I think if we could run those contracts through the county so we know where our bases are, they, they are on county business and then the entities pay what it actually costs, then I think we're fine with extrawaving. But we just want some wherewithal and the board really has the right to determine where those officers are going, where those deputies.
On their off-duty time? Off-duty work?
It wouldn't be off-duty anymore.
It wouldn't be off-duty.
Why wouldn't it be?
That's where the problem lies.
Why wouldn't it be?
That's where the problem lies.
Then it would be probably overtime.
That's where the problem lies.
Why would it not be off-duty work?
Because they'd be working for the county at that point in time.
No, the sheriff told you. The only liability that you're going to have, if they're in a facility where they are hired, the only time, and it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that the only time that your liability kicks in, if there's an apprehension or an arrest at an event. Am I, am I correct? Wrong?
Liability discontains. It never ends.
But it's, it's just, I don't want to argue with you. That, that's another way to look at it. And that's another olive branch that if that could be looked at, then I think it could all be resolved. But that thus far has not been a very popular way to look at it. But there are more than issues than just liability. You know, and you can dig up, one attorney opinion says this, another attorney general opinion says this. I mean, there's like, you know, having the illusion of working for the county when you're not because you have a uniform on. Well, it's confusion. I got a phone call two weeks ago and I don't, I didn't really want to bring it up now because I take these things somewhat with a brave assault, but it was a, a citizen that was, had some issues with the deputies and, and she said, and the main thing is, I don't know if they're on duty or off duty. See, I mean, people are confused. I just don't know if they're out there with cars, with uniforms, then we know, yeah, they're on duty. They're ours. They're working for us. They're at a school event and we know that.
Well, at this point...
At this time, we don't know who's working, when. We don't know if they're refreshed in the morning when they come in because they work a lot of hours. I mean, there's just, I think there's two ways that we could deal with this. One is to say county policy means nothing and we'll do what we want or come back and say, "Yeah, it does mean something." And, and you know, we're, we're not black and white. We're willing to, to work with it, but there's just a whole host of issues when you start looking at it other than just liability too. That's our main one. But there are...
That was your main one. And, and I think that that was presented in such a manner that it could be resolved. But to me, I look at the federal government and, and the way they're handling things right now and getting nothing done. And I see a similar situation happening right here.
Well, we're in constant discussion with the sheriff and, you know, this is going to get worked out one way or the other.
Well, I hope it would get worked out without costing the taxpayers any money.
I start to hope so myself, but...
You know, maybe Cheryl, you know this. The last two, I just, I meant to ask this. The last two years, there were, I believe, separate uniforms that were purchased to do extrawaving. Is that correct? They were not, because the policy was changed, I assume it was followed. And we were, and deputies were not using their uniforms. They must have bought some separate kind of uniform. Did the rate of phone calls and, and did, you know, things go up because they're using their deputy uniforms? I mean, I don't recall any consequences that were great for the, for the county. I mean, we didn't get a lot of extra calls. I mean, there, there just was nothing negative that happened other than there wasn't the illusion of working for the county when you're not working for the county. I mean, I don't know what, what happened that was so terrible that you had to come in then and change that policy. You know, you changed it. We, we thought about it. We were careful. We were deliberate. We knew that everyone wasn't happy, but we didn't say it couldn't work. You know, we still felt there was a presence. So, I guess I just wondered, did, I mean, did things really fall apart in the last two years when we, when we changed that policy?
Well, right. I, and you know what? I wasn't sheriff then. Yeah. And I wasn't sheriff then and nor did I...
I would have heard. I mean, you were, you're out in trenches, I would think, you know?
I didn't partake. I was not going to wear some security uniform when I was a deputy sheriff. I wasn't going to wear something that deviates from the uniform. And there's a myriad of reasons. We don't have time for, but...
I'm just wanting to see, did the number of calls greatly escalate?
I have no idea. Wasn't...
And were there, did violence erupt and did things become chaotic?
I think though, the confusion might be is that where you said they don't know if they're on duty or off duty.
It was just a citizen.
One citizen. But when you're dressed as this, there is no doubt. There's no, there's no question.
And I think that uniform means something. I do. I think it, it does. I'm not going to disagree with you on that. I think the olive branch is if we're going to have that uniform out in about a school of us, because I think it's important to have it.
Right.
I do. I, I'm not going to disagree with that. I think it, it is true.
Right.
The fact of the matter is, I just don't like that it's not running through here and that we're not actually having the cost of what it costs for that uniform.
Your, your timing is impeccable. And Mr. Marshall, thanks, thanks for coming, but the timing is good here because this,